Okay, we're recording.
Terrific, thank you. I'll call them into order. This is the October 27, 2020 meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. The first item on our agenda, Bills and Communications, the meeting minutes, the first is from September 29, 2020. Mark, Commissioner Corcoran? Move to approve. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Noonan. Mr. Corcoran, you're muted. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I move to approve.
Thank you. I didn't see any other, any questions or corrections, rather. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
1845 Bronson. In these minutes, I was there, but I don't seem to remember this. We approved the ice cream use in this meeting and then public hearing in the next meeting?
No, that's a, that's a good catch, Commissioner. That should be voted to recommend a public hearing instead of to approve.
Okay. And also it says Newman instead of Noonan.
Thank you.
Where is that? Where is Newman? See that?
Same, same item.
It's just one more, one more typographical issue.
Yes.
On the first condition, condition number one, that the word approve at the end should be approved.
Is approved with a D? Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's all I had.
Very good. Mr. Went, you get that?
We're talking on page one, first condition?
Sorry, page one, 528 Black Rock Turnpike, condition number one.
The very end, approved should be approved.
Mine says approved.
Well, we have it as approved, so whatever the official version, it should just be approved, D.
All right, that's, there must be, okay, I will double check what's on the, okay. My, our apologies to Commissioner Noonan for misspelling his name.
Okay, so with those changes, those edits, does anybody else have any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Ayes, please. Any extensions? All right, so the minutes as corrected are approved unanimously. Next are the minutes from October 13, 2020. Motion on those?
I move to accept.
Thank you. Motion approved by Commissioner Corcoran, second by Commissioner Noonan. Thank you, guys. Well, my eagle eyes didn't catch anything on the last one. I didn't see anything on this one either.
I didn't notice anything.
Yeah, here's Bronson. Yeah, good, okay. Anybody else? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions. The minutes are approved unanimously. Next item is new applications to recommend a public hearing, 3135 Easton Turnpike, special exception application of Sacred Heart University pertaining to the construction of an ice hockey arena in the design research and residence R3 zone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Went. For the record, you may have read, there was an announcement, oh, some time ago, that Sacred Heart intended to construct a ice hockey arena up on their west campus, the former GE property. They have inland wetlands approval, and now they are moving forward with their special exception application that does require a public hearing.
Excellent. Public hearings required. Motion approved by Commissioner Noonan?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Braun. Comments? Commissioner Corcoran?
No, no comments.
Okay. Any? Public hearings required. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extention? Items moved to public hearing unanimously. I neglected to mention at the top of the, the meeting that the applications for DPD Realty LLC for public hearing on the agenda, items two and three, the zoning regulation amendment and 1845 Bronson Road have been withdrawn. So if there's anyone here, members of the public, appearing for those two items, those have been officially withdrawn and are now off the agenda. Okay? So the next items are old business and they're related to items, I'll call them together. It's 3A zoning regulation amendment, the application of 131 Beach Road LLC to amend section 5.1.4 of the zoning regulations of the town of Fairfield, series of numerous public hearings, and 131 Beach Road zoning compliance application of 131 Beach Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a 40-unit residential building pursuant to section 830G of the Connecticut general statutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, I'll just briefly go through the issues of this application and the issues that arose during the public hearing. Together, you do need to take two separate actions, of course, but so with respect to the regulation amendment, the applicant, the application proposes a new section 5.4.1A to create a new inclusionary multifamily residential community use within, with a housing opportunity or affordable housing component within the A-zone. Eligible parcels in the A-zone must be both within 600 feet of the town hall campus and the post road in enclosed proximity to commercially zoned properties. Such developments must meet the 8-30G standard of 30% of the dwelling units being deed restricted as below market rate units. And the proposed design requirements include a minimum lot size of a half an acre, a minimum lot width of 100 feet, a minimum front setback of 50 feet, a minimum side setback of 10 feet, rear setback of 25 feet, and a maximum building height of five stories, 60 feet. Maximum previous lot coverage of 90%, minimum parking of one and a quarter spaces per unit, and a dwelling unit density of 35 units per one-half acre. So essentially, the design requirements, as was discussed at the hearing, the design requirements are tailored for the development proposed for the subject parcel. And the zoning compliance application, the companion application to this is, the subject site is a .65 acre site located in the residence A-zone. The site has been the home to the Fidelity Masonic Temple since 1950. A five-story building is proposed with four occupied stories above a ground floor lobby and at-grade parking. The height of the proposed building is 56 feet, as we define height to the roof midpoint, and approximately 62 feet to the roof ridge. A total of 40 residential units are proposed comprised of 16 one-bedroom units and 24 two-bedroom units. 12 of the 40 units will be deed restricted as below market rate units comprised of five one-bedroom units and seven two-bedroom units. A total of 55 parking spaces are proposed, or 1.375 per unit. The site presently has two driveways out to Beach Road. The proposed site plan will utilize the southerly driveway location for single ingress and egress driveway. During the hearing, the issues raised chiefly centered on traffic safety and the overall scale and massing of the project and its impact on the adjacent historic district. The traffic report estimates there will be 15 and 18 trips expected during the AM and PM peak hours respectively, with a 24-hour total development traffic volume of 218 trips. The trip distribution is estimated to be 85% to and from the north to the post road, and 15% to and from the south or the old post road. To provide adequate driveway sightlines, the report recommends eliminating six parking spaces along the easterly side of Beach Road. There was public opposition to the removal of those spaces and concern expressed about the estimated distribution of the traffic trips. With regard to the historic resources, there was lots of testimony about the impact on the historic district. In notably, notably, you've heard from the chair of the Historic District Commission, as well as Historic Preservation Specialist, who both opined, as many of the neighbors did, that the development is incongruous with the historic neighborhood, and that there will be diminished sense of place and direct visual impact to the adjacent historic district. Reference was made to two court cases during the course of this hearing, the first case being United Progress versus the Borough of Stonington. That case discusses the prospect that impact to historic resources is a legitimate matter that the commission can consider. You know, the second case, more recently, Cross Street LLC versus Westport P&amp;Z discusses, there was a discussion in that case about taking into consideration a community's progress in providing affordable housing and the balancing of potential impacts versus the need for additional affordable housing. In that discussion, there was testimony regarding the progress the town of Fairfield has made in recent years toward the goal of providing affordable housing. And, and we heard a summary of the developments that have occurred in that. Basically, developments that have been authorized since 2012 include 12 set aside 8-30G projects comprised of 383 total units and 185 affordable units. In addition to that, since the inception in 2015 of our inclusionary zoning regulations, which requires 10% set aside of below market rates for developments of 10 or more units, there have been a total of 892 dwelling units approved, including 91 affordable units. So the total combined authorized number of units is 1,275 total units, with 276 of those, or 21.6 of the total, being affordable units. In rebuttal, the applicant indicated that the removal of the six-on-street parking spaces that there was fair discussion about was a recommendation, but not necessary, in their opinion, to establish a proper sightline. They would agree to recommend to the police commission the removal of the space. They have no objection to having those spaces removed, but they do object, or would not agree to a mandate that removal of the spaces be a prerequisite for the construction of the development. The applicant also argued that reliance on the Cross Street case that I noted is misplaced, in their view, as the impact of historic resources in that case in Westport was not enough to outweigh the need for affordable housing. The applicant also argues that the overall design and massing of the development does not rise to an issue of public health or safety. As well known to this commission, the standards for review of an affordable housing application differ from other typical zoning applications. For denial of an affordable housing application to be sustained, the burden is on the commission to prove based on evidence in the record that a decision from which an appeal might be taken, in reasons cited for its decision, are supported by sufficient evidence in the record. The commission shall have the burden to prove that A, the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters which the commission may legally consider; B, such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing; and C, such public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the proposed development. Court cases, as you've heard before, have indicated that the record must be, must establish more than a mere possibility of harm to a substantial public interest and contain evidence of a quantifiable probability that such specific harm would result if the application were granted. It is important to note that we've had cases on this before and other applications, that it is not necessary for the applicant to amend the zoning regulations or change the zone in order for a project to be approved as zoning compliant, zoning compliance is not necessary in an affordable housing application. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for the, for the, for the summary. You know, this, this was a very, very complex and complicated application that, you know, spanned some five or six hearing days. So there's a lot of information to consider here. And there's still some, in my opinion, there's, there's still some work to be done. I, I wanted to let the, my fellow commissioners know that I'm still, I am interested in having an opportunity to do a little bit more work on this. The hearing, the deadline for us to decide this application is not until December. Mr. Went, can you just confirm for me when?
Yeah, that is correct. There's a regulation amendment component to this application, which means that you have 65 days from the close of the public hearing to make a decision which would carry that to your December meeting.
So a regularly scheduled meeting in December, which I think is what, December 17?
I'd have to look. We have, the next meeting after this is November the 10th, followed by the December meeting would be the 8th.
Yeah, so so I'm not advocating that we, that we decide tonight to extend it all the way into the December meeting, but we have at least two more meetings at which, you know, we, we can decide this. In other words, there's, there's no urgency to decide this tonight. So in light of that, I see Mr. Noonan raising his hand. You know, I entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to table the item. I have similar views and would like to spend some more time on this issue, this application.
Okay, motion to table by Commissioner Noonan. Commissioner Braun, second? Okay, second by Commissioner Braun. Thanks. So, you know, with those motions now pending, I mean, please, let's feel free if we'd like to discuss, you know, the, the motion or, or any other aspects of this, we, we can feel free to do so at this time, but I appreciate the the motion and, and the additional time to, you know, do more, do further work on this. Commissioner Noonan, any, any other comments?
Nothing beyond what you have said. As I said, I would like some more time. This is a little, there's a lot of nuances to it. This will be very impactful for the community. I think we should take our time with it, since we have the time to take.
Commissioner Braun? You're on mute. I'm sorry.
There are a lot of legal issues and cases cited by all sides, as well as dueling witnesses in some instances. So I think we need more than the past two weeks to review all that.
Right. Very good. Anyone else? Okay. So the motion on the table is to table the item until our, our next meeting, which will be in November. Okay. Which will be, Mr. Went, what did you say? When is the next meeting?
November the 10th.
November the 10th, and that's our only meeting in November?
That's the only scheduled meeting at this point, sir.
Yep, and then, all right, okay, good. So this is to table the item until our next meeting in, on November 10th. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so the, the two items, the regulation amendment, as well as the application for 131 Beach Road compliance app have been tabled until November 10th.
Just, just one note, Mr. Chairman, if I may, housekeeping wise, for any members of the commission in the intervening couple of weeks, if you need to review any of the, the audio recordings of the public hearings are, I believe, available on the Fair TV website, but they're also logged on the commission's, under files and documents on the commission's page. If anybody needs a link to the recording and is having trouble finding it, please let me know and I can help you with that.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move into our public hearing for tonight. We have, with the withdrawal of DPD Realty LLC's applications, we have items. First is a zoning regulation amendment, application of the Affordable Housing Committee to amend section 6.0 of the zoning regulations for accessory apartments. And so for members of the public that are here to space, comments, and log into the chat, chat feature, and indicate to Ms. Harrigan that you'd like to speak, and we'll have a, a list of folks who were signed up. The applicant will, will present, they're finished, we'll go into comment, and then we'll call everybody at that point. When members of the public completed their comments, we'll move to a rebuttal, and then we'll close the public hearing on, on each item, and we'll proceed in the same fashion for the, for the second item on, on the agenda as well. All right, so with that, Mr. Went, who do we have from?
Carrie McOver from the Affordable Housing Committee is going to be making, leading this presentation.
Hello, Ms. Mc.
Hi, thank you, thank you, everybody, for, for being here. This is a small attendance, which I haven't seen before, but I'm happy about that, I think, because I haven't actually made a presentation on Webex or Zoom before. So first of all, this is, there are several of us involved with this. There are three different committees, and it's being presented by the Affordable Housing Commission, but Fairfield Senior Advocates, which I'm also a member of, and Fair Plan, the three of us all are very interested in seeing this happen. So let me just go through who's here from these groups. Herb Limcooler, who's head of FSA, and Mary Hoag from Fair Plan, and then I see other people from the Affordable Housing Committee. I see Cynthia up, well, on my screen, she's up in the top, and who else? I saw a few, Steve Graffol, who's our chair, he's down there, and did I miss anybody? Sheila? I saw Sheila, there's Sheila. And there may be other people more off my screen, but anyways, let's get started. Probably accessory dwelling units is, it's a term I'm using because that's what's in use in general right now. In our current regulations, we call them accessory apartments, but the larger term that's in use by everybody across the country now is accessory, is ADU, is accessory dwelling units. I'll probably be using that term more, but we're here to tell you about some proposed changes that we'd like to see to the ADU regulations, because we need more affordable housing in this town. We need both affordable housing that's naturally occurring, which is when rents are just not too expensive, and we also need more affordable housing that helps us with 824. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. And let me find where I need to be. New meetings. Firefox, I'm not finding it. There it is. All right, can can you see that, or is I the only one who can see it?
We can't see it yet, Carrie. If you run into trouble, just let me know and I'll share my screen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing, I'm, I'm seeing, oh, there it is, okay, there it is. Did it come up? Not yet.
There it is.
Okay, all right, there's my presentation. So, as I said, we're all here because we want to see these regulations kind of amended to, in a way, bring them into the 21st century or where we are now. We need more diversity in our housing stock by updating these regulations because everything is just much more diverse right now, and it's happening really quickly. It's happened quickly over the past many years. Let me see how I move this. No, that's not what I want to do. Share, son, mute, stop video. I just have to figure out how to move this.
Carrie, just use your scroll bar on the right-hand side.
Oh, okay, yeah. Right. We, here's why we need more diverse housing options. As you all know, our housing needs vary through our life cycle. We go through several periods in our life where we need something bigger, we need something smaller, we want an apartment, we want our house. We need it for naturally occurring affordable housing, and we need it for capital A affordable housing, and that's what we've been calling the 830G applications that come before us, capital A, so we can differentiate them. Demographics have changed, and they've changed throughout the country. It's not only here. Aging population, which we've seen here, increased longevity. People are now, the average longevity is 79 years old. Smaller households in Fairfield, I think we're just at 2.14 approximately. We have more millennials, we have fewer married couples, people are living longer, especially widows, divorces. There's also a need for increased income for seniors and for others, because life's getting more expensive, and all this has been put together in a perfect storm by COVID-19, where everything has come, has happened at once. From people having to work in different places, from schools being closed, from the effect on our seniors, which has been tremendous, as you'll remember when this all started in the spring of this year, the, the death rates of people in assisted living and in nursing homes over the state was really incredible and very scary, and people began thinking about, where am I going to put my, where am I going to put my family? I don't want to send them to one of those places right now. This has also been noted, this is the other thing that happened. We were well on our way to talking about the POCD when all of a sudden everything was stopped, but this slide, which is from Emeline's POCD presentation, that I think was in either February or March of this year, we had comments, as you'll see right up here, allow attached detached accessory dwelling units, and the number of checkmarks being indicated to the people who commented about that. And similarly, we had support for cluster housing, pocket development surrounded by greenfield houses, smaller multiple tiny homes on one lot. We had a number of people talking about smaller homes that are being replaced by larger new construction, and how to incentivize smaller single-family dwelling, concern about large homes possibly being broken into smaller units condos. So there was a lot of discussion even at that time about diversifying our housing. What we now have in accessory apartments right now in our regulations, they must be owner-occupied homes, and it's only allowed in AAA, AA, AR3, and R2 zones, part of existing homes minimum, 450 square feet and not more than 40% total. These are attached homes. That's the only thing we allow right now, are attached accessory dwelling units. We don't allow more than two people in an apartment. They have a shared mailbox and utilities. We have 265 total units, but not all of those are permitted units through, through the office. They are well distributed through Fairfield. If you look at these smaller dots up here in the screen up top, you can see that those are probably pre, a number of them would be pre-existing 1925. They would have been estate houses or gardener's cottages, gardener's, or something over garage and other estates. So those are pre-existing. Many of these are probably not permitted, and we don't always have good records on all of those. Then there's a variety of other affordable housing scattered through here. It's difficult to see on this map, but I think the map is on the website for Town Plan and Zoning as part of their documents, and perhaps you can get a closer look, but this is showing both our total assisted living units, such as the ones run by the, such as Pine Tree, and also the scattered units throughout town. So ADUs respond to the need for housing diversity. They can be found in many, in many ways, in many sizes, but these are some typical ones. To the left is a typical cottage. It's probably out in Seattle someplace, and this was probably built to be an ADU. It looks slightly bigger than a single-car garage would have been. So that's one type of one that you'll see. This is, again, this is not a unit from here. This is probably somewhat smaller than a two-car garage, but clearly it's a garage with an apartment. with an apartment up above it and you can see that by the eaves, a door below. This would be a typical freestanding garage in the middle, converted into being an ADU. And the one on the right, which is a plan and not an actual built house where I know about, this is showing that you can have an interior ADU and you can have a house and depending how it's designed, it will look like a single-family house. This particular ADU has a side entry, but that's not totally necessary and that's one of our proposals also. So the benefits to people from increasing ADUs, oh, there are so many. I'm sure you've all heard about them and thought about them. The, that provides spaces where older and younger family members can live together, not exactly together, they're living separate but together, which is a tremendous advantage to anybody who's lived more than perhaps three or four days with a family member might think. It adds diverse housing options for people in different stages of life. It reduces housing costs for both owners and renters because the owners have a stream of income and the renters have a lower cost of housing. So this is what's providing a needed income stream for homeowners. We've heard so many of our seniors through FSA say they really want to stay in Fairfield. It's the town they live in and the town they love, but they can't afford to stay here. This income stream would help them. And it provides efficient living quarters for singles and empty nesters and allows for aging in place. And benefits for the town, and this is important too, because this maintains the existing scale and character of the neighborhood and it reduces the cost, you know, we were, well, I don't want to get into the hearing that you just tabled, but that certainly was one of the considerations. It reduces the cost of building and maintaining infrastructure because if you build or you construct accessory housing, the infrastructure is already there. The streets are there, the sewer system is there, the school system is there. These maintain the character to spreading out the visual impact instead of the larger units, apartments that we've been seeing. It increases the supply of lower-cost housing, which works well for numbers of one or two persons. It adds to the customer base and it helps keep seniors in town. That works in a way that's comfortable for them and comfortable for the town. So what we're proposing, first of all, this diagram on the right is an example of types of interior dwelling units and some detached. The one on the left is just showing a detached on the top left. The attached ADU, which is typical, is over here on the right, attached above garage ADU. This is an interior basement ADU, which is probably not as popular, but if you've got the right kind of lot and something, especially with a split level, that can work very well if it's a walkout basement. This is a converted garage ADU also. And then this one would be an upper floor ADU. So those are generally the typical patterns. 24 by 24, which is a typical two-car garage, is very easily converted into an ADU. So to go through what we're proposing, the actual proposal that we've made and you have these in your packet, the accessory department shall not contain less than 450 square feet. That's not a legal requirement, so we just took it out and we slightly increased the size to 40% or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. So that would be the maximum size that you could have. Then we propose removing, this is important, this next one is perhaps very important. Right now, the way the regulation reads, the house, if, let's say somebody had built a family room which conformed to everything, they did an extension two years ago, it's now three years later and they want to convert that to an attached accessory apartment, they have to go to ZBA for a variance. And that just seems so unreasonable that it would stop people in their tracks if they have to have a public hearing to just have an apartment on something that's already legal. And so we propose that that language be omitted. There is no other town that's doing anything like that and it just seems not to make sense to us. Then there was one other provision in the regulations right now that you couldn't have two front doors on the front facade because it might, well, it isn't said, but it might look like a duplex, but that was probably the reason. And two front doors, as you can see on these pictures, that does not make it look like a duplex over there or the one on the bottom one, there's a front door on the left and then the accessory dwelling unit on the right. Duplexes only look like duplexes when they are duplex, such as the one above. So we are saying that you can have access as long as it's separated by the front door by 10 feet and it's a different appearance than the primary entrance.
Yeah. So let me just ask it, stop there for a moment.
Sure. Yeah, I need a drink of water anyway.
No, no problem. And then maybe we, maybe there are others that have questions as well.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the description of different appearance. Quite frankly, before we got the, was seeing your presentation and your explanation, I was wondering, you know, how to interpret that. Because one might argue that the, in the upper right-hand corner of the example here, those two doors have a similar appearance. No, 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 go back to the one you just had. Yeah. You know, you putting, not all of those are up there as examples of duplexes. The duplex is the one on the left.
Correct.
Yeah. The one in the upper right, you're citing as an example of an accessory dwelling unit, right?
It could be. I don't, yeah, that's just a picture I found online. I don't know if it is. The one on the bottom right actually is an accessory, is a house in Fairfield that does have a door there and a door there. Do you see my cursor when I move it? Because I'm not.
I do.
Okay. So there's one door and there's the other door. Okay.
So my point is a different appearance. One could say, well, those are the similar appearance because they're both red and in the bottom one, they're both gray and bounded by white trim. You know, I mean, like, what, I don't understand the, how we would, you know, incorporate that into an application and, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand what you mean and I'm certain that could be clarified with some wording from Jim or Emmeline to say that it either had to be a different physical appearance or painted differently. I mean, these, these are pictures and certainly from looking at the two ones on the right, I don't think of those as being duplexes and nor do I think of, I've taken many pictures, which I didn't put into this particular presentation, of houses in my neighborhood where there are two doors on the front facade. They're either similar or they're set back as this is, they're not next together though and I never think of them as being duplexes. I just, I just don't. And I think if you all walk around your own neighborhood, you will see those kinds of doors.
I think.
There are many, there are many such houses in Fairfield, you're correct.
Yeah.
And so I think the point is, the answer to my question and the point of the proposal here in 6.3.4.
Yeah.
To prevent the appearance of duplex.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any other questions before we move on? I have, and using the split screen, I can only see a couple of, you know, screens at one time.
Right, Matt.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Cork.
Yeah. So back to this idea of, I'm not sure why we, why is it considered desirable not to look like a duplex?
I don't know what the commission's thinking at the time when they made this particular rule was, but some people would say, we don't want two-family houses or we don't want duplexes or whatever they would say. You know, I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know, but it just seems unnecessary because there are some instances where it may make more sense to have a front door entrance and other times where it's better on the side or the back. I just think you don't want to, you know, preclude one quarter of the house's sides from being used when it may make more sense in that particular case.
Okay, well, I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused. In effect, aren't we creating duplexes yet?
No, because a duplex would imply that the sizes are totally equal and here clearly an accessory dwelling unit is accessory to the main unit and that's found in the size
I don't know. To me, it seems to me that this is, and I'm not against it, but I'm just saying it seems to be an argument to allow apartments anywhere in town. And I think that's what it is.
It's not quite that because there are some zones in which apartments even now are not permitted, I mean, accessory apartments, and so we're not talking about those.
Okay, but for the ones we are.
At the point, but, yeah.
You had a description of people aging in place and living with family members, but I don't see anything that restricts it to those circumstances.
No, not right now unless the house is too small. There's certainly no restriction. Accessory apartments, as they stand right now, can be used for that. We're trying to provide more flexibility. More, more, people, so odd, people at the same time that housing has become smaller over the past several years, now wanting to become larger is people need home offices and spaces for kids coming home. We have so many millennium children now living with their parents. I think it was 48% was this statistic I read because they can't afford their own place and they're either not in college or their work has been moved home. So we have all kinds of things going on which have called for much more diversity needed for housing for everybody, I think.
But again, you've described this in terms of multi-generational families, but these are just apartments as far as I can see.
They are and they're not. They're sort of apartments, like they are apartments and you can rent them to anybody. You're most likely to rent to a family member if it's attached to your house. You may not always rent to a family member if it's a detached ADU, but we're not up there yet. I'm not to that panel yet.
So interesting comment you just made that you're most likely to rent it to a family member. I mean, we live next to Bridgeport where there are three, three family houses all over the place of unrelated people.
Interestingly enough, three family houses got their start in triple-deckers. They were generally always family, mother, daughter, and grandmother. It's different now, I'm sure, but that's how they got started. There were always families living together. Families living together is a very old tradition. I mean, it's only new that we're not living so much together as we used to be.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay. Can we go on?
Any other commissioners have any questions before we move on?
Got a few more slides that we've, then we have other comments. Okay. Okay. We also put, I mean, these are the major things we've put into the regulations. We put in a rental time limitation, either the existing house or the accessory apartment can be rented for less than a period of 30 consecutive days and that was because of the concern with Airbnb rentals.
So if you have an ADU, you can't do an Airbnb?
Correct. Well, you could for 30 days. I mean, you could rent it to somebody for 30 days, I suppose, but not less than 30 days.
You can't do a short-term rental for less than 30.
Yeah.
Commissioner Noonan, Commissioner Noonan, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Yeah. You're, the Airbnb, the less than 30 days catches my attention. A lot of the things you spoke about earlier, giving seniors a flexibility, giving them an extra income potential, would seem that maybe in Airbnb, you know, we would be able to allow an Airbnb-style thing, I'll use your term, something less than 30 days if it, you know, allows, you're getting a few extra bucks a month. I mean, it kind of dovetails with Commissioner Corcoran, it said that the extra income, not necessarily to family, but just extra income in general would be helpful. Do you, is there any, the commission were, go ahead.
There's something in our regulations right now in general that no, there can be no rental of less than 30 days of houses. Mr. Wendt, maybe?
Jim Wendt, for the record, we, our existing regulations for rumors and borders, if you've got a spare bedroom in your house, for example, and you want to rent to rumors and borders, you can do so under our current regulations to up to two individuals sharing a common kitchen, provided that the lease term is not less than 30 days. So I think the intent here is just to be consistent with that existing rumors and borders language in our regulations so that the occupancy of an accessory apartment is a more longer-term situation than a transient occupancy. You know, we did have some discussion with the applicant here before we got to this point and that was our, you know, recommendation to be consistent with language we presently have.
Okay, that's, I understand. Is this kind of accessory apartment similar to that arrangement? They share, would there not be a kitchen in the accessory apartment?
No, 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 no. There has to be a kitchen in an accessory apartment. To be considered an accessory apartment, you need to have a kitchen and a bathroom and, you know, a bedroom, other rooms or other room. But there are people who probably don't have a kitchen, they just might have a coffee pot or a sink or a dorm fridge or something like that. That's not necessarily an accessory apartment. It's not an accessory apartment according to our regulations.
Excuse me, thank you.
Okay. All right, then we have a Section 6310 because we're the Affordable Housing Committee. We are also concerned with using some of these units, having them constructed or built or permitted and deed restricted to count towards our housing unit equivalency points. And so that's what all this is about. And this works in conjunction with the state regulation and with Section 31 of our own And if there are any questions on this, I think Mark is here and would be able to answer them.
I appreciate that. So is there an opportunity here to incent those who already have accessory dwelling units that are not deed restricted to, to do so and, and so to bring those into the fold or not?
Yes, that is something because we now have housing trust funds and that is something the Affordable Housing Committee will be working on an incentive program to do exactly that, to both see that some of these can be brought up to code and be deed restricted and that would be wonderful for everybody.
Okay. That's going to be a separate subsequent proposal?
I don't know if, well, yes, I guess however we spend housing trust funds would have to be a separate proposal, but I'm really not sure about that. It's not a part of this proposal at this moment, except for this language here.
Okay.
Mary, I have a question.
Yeah.
Commissioner Corcoran. So looking at 6.3.10, is the, is the 10-year restriction sufficient to be counted for 830G?
That is my understanding.
I thought it was 40 years.
That's for the other type of apartment, not the deed-restricted ones. Those are for the regular big apartments.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim. That's an unresolved issue to the best of our knowledge. Mr. Chairman, there's a conflict in the statute where it defines, 8-30G defines an accessory apartment to be several things, one of which is, has a 10-year deed restriction, but there's a dispute as to whether a But there's a dispute as to whether a, an accessory apartment that's deed restricted for less than forty years may contribute to the moratorium points. That was an issue uh, in another town. Uh, that was granted provisional um, moratorium status while that item was actually uh, referred to the Attorney General of the State. And since the moratorium expired, the moratorium expired before, there was an opinion, so it's, it's kind of an un, untested issue. There are, just to, as, since we're on the subject, there's, there's a couple of other provisions of eight dash thirty G in the accessory apartment piece. Uh, it's kind of quirky. They require an interior connection, an interior door, for example, between the main unit and the accessory unit under eight dash thirty G, which our regulations um, don't require. That certainly can be provided. Um, but so, um, so it's, I guess the, the short answer to the question, it's unresolved as to whether a ten-year limit would suffice to gain moratorium points. But that's uh, uh, we've brought that up to our um, state representatives to clarify that because it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to define it at ten years and then not be able to get credit for it unless it's deed restricted for no greater, no less than forty years. So that's, that's, that's an issue we're, we're trying to seek some clarity and resolution on.
Got it. Tell me, the Attorney General sat on the, on the uh, the application for, for four years and the moratorium expired and then they declared it moot?
Yes.
It seems like we should get, get an advisory opinion on this, this issue from a state agency that's willing to give us such an opinion.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we, we have, um, I suppose this is something that we can talk about in an executive session, but if, you know, we have a proposal to amend our local regulations to comply with eight thirty G and incent the development of affordable housing. But if we have this open question, we want to make sure that we're doing it right, which I think is grounds for an advisory opinion from the Attorney General. I mean, that's something I think that we could do. But then, you know, if they're just going to sit on it for however many years, and we don't want to delay this either. And maybe we ask, pass it and ask.
Um, I have one more.
Or is another, another thing, I mean, it's, it's, that, that's a little funky, but go ahead. Commissioner Corcoran?
Uh, just a comment. Um, at the uh, six point three point ten, the first section of it, there's a, like a long description, but there's no verb in it. And all the other sections are actually sentences with verbs.
For affordable housing, of course, with the provisions, the regular season. Where are we talking about? I don't, should be rented.
Ten, I can tell you, I think I know what it means.
Okay.
You, you need to, but it starts off an accessory apartment to be used.
To be used for affordable housing in accordance with subsection six point three six. That's your existing six, three, six of this regulation.
So here's my comment is, maybe it should say, an accessory apartment is to be used for affordable housing. There's no verb in the whole sentence.
Is to be used for affordable, no, because we have, because there is going to be affordable housing constructed that is not deed restricted. So there, there's really, let's say that there will be affordable dwelling units constructed or, or remodeled probably. To, some of it will be used for affordable housing in accordance with this provision, and some of it will be used for what I keep calling naturally occurring affordable housing. And that doesn't have to comply, that's, those particular units don't have to comply with this particular section.
Right, so my comment is not substantive. I'm just saying that all the other sections are sentences with verbs and periods. This is not. It, it, it just is a group of words with no, with no verb.
To be used for affordable housing.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the fix to that uh, would be instead of the words to be used, and replace that with may qualify. So an accessory apartment may qualify for affordable housing. And then take it from there. That would be mine.
That's fine. Yeah. That's fine.
Very good.
Question?
Commissioner Francis?
Will the town maintain a list of these affordable apartments when people move out?
We, the town, the, the plan and zoning office now has a list of approved apartments. I don't know that they're used to advertise to people, but that's how they keep track of the permits. And the assessors have another group of apartments listed on, on their own documentation, which they're calling in-law apartments, and we don't believe that all of those are permitted apartments or that are, would meet these particular regulations.
If I may, Jim Went, I think, uh, I, I, I think what you're driving at is if somebody is going to deed restrict their unit as an affordable unit, then the truth is, is yes, we would need to maintain a, a list of those that have been so deed restricted.
In the Department of Housing, all right. And then um, I also wanted an idea in, from Mr. Barnhart, probably knows this. What, what's the affordable income of one person in the Bridgeport medium area? What is the median income in the Bridgeport area for one person to qualify for affordable housing?
If I, if I may?
Sure.
This is Mark Barnhart for the record. Uh, I wasn't sure if I was, I was heard or not, but uh, it, it changes from year to year, it's set annually by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, currently for one person, uh, don't quote me exactly, but it's roughly fifty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Okay, and um, which is very generous, okay. And is, are people who qualify for affordable housing allowed to have other assets? I mean, I assume they can have a car, but how, how much savings accounts can they? What kind of assets could they have after they sold their home and that type of thing?
It's typically an income test. It's not an asset-based test, so it's based on your income as reported federal access.
Okay, and that's all?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart.
Okay.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Just, uh, just, just a topographical issue. Are we missing a six point three point nine um, in the proposed amendment? Or did I misread?
Well, I don't have it up on the slide, and if there's an error in the.
Yeah, I just, I just flag it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think that Commissioner Braun would like to speak also.
Mr. Braun? I'm sorry, I don't have, like, real things. I can't see people.
Um, Chair, if, if you can, when you look at the presentation itself, there's a little arrow in the upper right corner, and you can toggle between being able to see people and then being able to reduce the size of the presentation.
Yep, no, I didn't. I just have to go back and forth, which I'm trying to do. Thank you.
Um, I'm trying to grapple with what incentive anybody would have to go through all this extra burden to get the affordable, to get the um, uh, to, to do affordable housing accessory unit as opposed to just the accessory unit. Maybe, can we offer amnesty or some other carrot to get people to convert currently illegal accessory dwellings into these? I mean, how would that work? Because if something is not legal now, but then we change the regulation, does that make them all become legal so then they don't need to go, there's no incentive, in other words, for someone to dedicate these as affordable?
Yep, the, the incentives are likely going to be a significant cash outlay in some way, whether it's a loan that gets reduced or a tax reduction, I don't know yet. But that's certainly what other towns have done, and other towns have also had an amnesty period to bring things into conformance. So all of those are things that the Affordable Housing Committee can be looking at as we work through how to promote these. As, as I said earlier, though, there are units in Greenfield who that predate zoning, and those would be non-conforming, and those would be okay.
Do we know how many are illegal now? Non-predating zoning that could.
It isn't so. It, it isn't so much that um, that we have an exact count on it. We just know when we look at the differences and counts between what the tax assessor might have, what they call in-law apartment, and we really don't know what they are unless, we don't even know if it's really an apartment or if it's just a couple of rooms with a private entrance. So I would say, no, we don't really know. We just know that they do exist.
I'd like to see something added which, in the zoning reg thus being proposed, which offers amnesty to further encourage people without, it, it seems like adding a path outline. Would that be in the zoning regulation or would that be somewhere else? I mean, it seems to me like the zoning reg should offer an incentive as well, Mal.
Yeah, that's normally not something you'd put in zoning regs. I think you, um, it might be someplace else. My experience with this.
Jim Went for the record, Kathy, the, I, I, I think the um, there's two different, two different issues there. Uh, I, I don't believe that's a large number of existing units that haven't already been captured under the accessory apartment reg that would need some sort of amnesty provision. The, the, the incentive piece is some sort of financial incentive to um, to create affordable housing is likely going to be outside the scope of the regulation. It's going to be some sort of town mechanism that will be offered uh, in order for folks to qualify for that, to offset that cost. And, and what the regulation is proposing is the parameters to qualify for affordability. You know, this is, this is, if you're going to be an affordable unit, this is what it has to be. Um, but the monetary incentive is likely going to be a separate program outside of the scope of the regulations by other entities in the town.
But if somebody was illegal now, and if we did change the regs, would they submit? Or they have to basically apply to convert to a legal unit?
Well, the, the, the proposal that's, that's on the table here is, reduces the barriers to entry to an affordable or uh, to an accessory apartment. So unless you are less, um, you know, it, it eliminates a minimum square footage, for example. Since you need to be, um, there's a maximum floor area. So if you've got a larger than a thousand square foot apartment now, you wouldn't qualify under this. So that's about the only thing that you may not um, qualify for, would be if you're, if you're too large. Because there's no minimum uh, floor area requirement. Where the proposal is to eliminate the um, the time period for which an addition may have been done. And in the AAA zone, uh, I'm not sure we've gotten to that point yet, um, would allow a detached unit. So those are the largest barriers that we have encountered for folks that might want to otherwise do it. Um, the, 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 the largest hurdle for folks is the requirement that they can't put an addition on. Um, so I think the, the idea here is to try to make it less onerous for entry. I, I don't think there's a large number of folks that have undocumented apartments, if you will, that we would have to deal with because I think many of those um, came in. But I, I don't think there would be any problem or um, that it would create a problem if we were to insert a, some sort of amnesty provision. So I think an amnesty provision and a requirement for affordability are two, two different things.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mack, over, please, please, uh.
All right, this is, this, this is uh, this is new, totally new, as my red words new says. But in, in residence AAA, a freestanding constructor, maybe constructed or converted into an accessory apartment under the following conditions. And I listed conditions that basically are in conformance with zoning. In other words, you, at two acres, you, you pretty much can conform to setbacks in height, and you still have the floor area restriction, and you have to conform to all regulations and requirements of the Fairfield Health Department and Building Department. So this is a new provision for a freestanding accessory dwelling unit. It does not have to be attached to the house, although it could be, but it does not have to be. And this is in uh, response to what we saw earlier about the P O C D where people are saying, we'd like to be able to have these. And I think that's probably even more now than it was, say, a year ago when all this was being talked about through the P O C D where people are feeling that they want to have a place for their kids or for their parents or some, a caretaker perhaps, or they want to live in a ADU and rent out their house that they just want that flexibility up in the Greenfield Hill area.
Okay.
Any questions about that?
Yes, what, just one question.
Yeah.
Where, uh, Smackup, where you say the maximum size in um, letter C, the maximum size for the accessory apartment within said structure shall be no greater than one thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Is that intended to uh, apply to, say, you know, if you have a garage where you want to convert uh, space above the garage to an accessory apartment? That the garage, the existing garage space wouldn't count for the thousand square?
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking of some of the big barns up there and some of the garages that you could perhaps isolate or take one thousand square feet of that area and use it for an accessory apartment within said structure.
Thank you.
What about a detached unit?
Yeah, that's, that's uh, you can, you, oh, you mean construct a detached unit that's two thousand square feet and use a thousand of it for an apartment?
Well, yeah, or, or, or.
I'd have to look, I'd have to look back and see, I don't remember exactly offhand what our maximum size of a sec, accessory structures are, just if you were.
Forty, forty percent or a thousand square feet.
In these regs, but I mean, if, going back to your definitions right now, I don't have it right in front of me, but there must be some places sized for accessory structures in Residence A, and I'm not even sure it would make a thousand square feet. In other words, I'm not sure you can construct now a garage or a barn that's that size. I just don't know the answer to that question.
I do.
So, okay, somebody must there.
This is Jim. There, there, there is no maximum size for an individual accessory structure other than it has to be subordinate to the primary permitted use. So you can't have an accessory structure that's larger than your house. Um, but it also has to meet all the total floor area and lot coverage requirement maximums. So you could build, under this proposal, as I read it, uh, you could propose to build a one thousand square foot freestanding structure that would be an accessory apartment as long as that's not greater than forty percent of the main house uh, on the lot.
But uh, Jim, can you build, like, right now, you could build a much, a twenty-five hundred square foot basketball court or, or barn as long as you had the coverage available and you met setbacks?
Correct, as long as that structure is subordinate to the primary permitted use.
Okay, okay, good.
I have a question.
Commissioner Noonan? Go ahead.
Why limit it to uh, AAA and two acres? I suspect the answer might, the, the answer might simply be size, not able to get it in lesser areas. Why make that limit to only AAA and two acres?
There are lots of people who would like to see it allowed in uh, you know, double A's. And I think uh, just because I started up there, I, I don't have a good reason for saying why it was limited. That was how I drafted it at the time. I think it could certainly work in other zoning areas.
I mean, if, if you just took out the Residence A and the subsection A and it just kind of read, if you can fit it and you meet every other regulation, why not have the opportunity and the freedom to do it?
I think that's worth a discussion when you're discussing it in um, your executive session.
Okay, but you, okay, no, no major objections, it sounds like, okay.
No, I, I wouldn't have one in a, in a major objection.
I have a question, other question?
Yeah.
Um, so uh, just trying to clarify this forty percent versus a thousand square feet. If you had a standalone um, two or three-car garage that had a loft in it?
Yeah.
Can you convert that loft into an accessory unit?
That's what this regulation. That's what this regulation says. That's what this proposed regulation says.
Well, it says 40% of the building. So it's 40% of the.
Of the main house.
Not of the garage.
Right, of the main house.
Okay.
I had one extra question. If Commissioner Corcoran is done.
Yeah, I'm done.
Um, how many accessory apartments are allowed on one lot?
One.
You're talking trip, excuse me?
Only one.
Okay, because I haven't. Because in in trying to remember the previous proposed regulations and even looking here, I don't necessarily see something that says you're allowed one.
I think.
It almost seems like in like a AAA with two acres, if you have the right coverage, if you have the right coverage, hold on one second.
Um, I believe I believe in in the current section three up at the, you know, very beginning, the introduction to the section three, which I cannot find in the group of papers on my desk, but I think we say it's just one, one unit, and that would still be holding. But I.
I need to look through myself because I did somebody jump in and want to point to it.
This is Commissioner Bremen. If you look at the preamble to 6.3 conditions and requirements, it refers to a single accessory apartment.
Right. Yeah, that that's what I was thinking. That's what I knew was there someplace. So.
Can you go back to that, please, in your slide, just so I can take a quick look?
Go back to. I don't have that language on the slide, because you have it in your printed copy there, but I couldn't put everything on the slide.
And I'll look for it. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's just to clarify.
It's 716.
That's existing regulation language. That's that's not anything that's proposed to be modified by this proposal. That's existing language that limits necessary apartment to be a single apartment.
Okay, so the existing language says literally one accessory per lot.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think you would have to be clear that somebody on a non-tripling zone would have to construct a new freestanding unit, because it looks like it has to be within the house street. But also, there are people who have garages that they would like to convert. So that would be covered under this, right? It would be the garage would have to be 40% of the size of the house, though, or less than 30%. I'm sorry, we're getting rid of the minimum requirement, not the maximum requirement.
Correct.
Because there are plenty of other size prop other, you know, areas that other than AAA were smaller, like B or R1 or whatever, that might have a garage they could use for this. Or build one.
Okay. This is my summary slide. This is an existing. This is not an accessory dwelling unit apartment, but it is a beautiful studio showing. I just put it in there because I like it. But it is a it's on Judson Street, right behind Town Hall. And I just think it's very appealing. And I guess my point of this picture is that these things are not visually disturbing. They can be visually engaging. So the summary is to eliminate the five-year look back period to construct an addition for an accessory apartment. And that that's really important. That avoids people having to go to ZBA for something that really they shouldn't have to go for. To eliminate the minimum size requirement, allowing a slight expansion to the maximum size. To eliminate prohibition of the doorway on the accessory apartment on the front facade of the resident, but to require a separation of at least 10 feet. To prohibit rental for less than 30 days. To spell out in detail requirements for affordable units that will be deed restricted, and to allow freestanding accessory apartment ADUs in residential AAA, provided they meet dimensional requirements. That's that's the summary of what we're proposing here. And I'm sure there are probably some minor tweaks you you would, you know, like to be considered. So who we are, who we are, whoops, why can't I get that slide? All right, this is the three of us who've been working on this, the Affordable Housing Committee, Fair Plan and Fairfield Senior Advocates. And these statements are just from everybody's mission statement. And then the last slide, and this is something I hope really, there's so much information out there now about accessory dwelling units. All you have to do is ask Google about it. But these first three, which the first one is our report from 2014, and where we talked about the need for accessory apartments. The A B C of ADUs, that's by A A R P, and they really have some terrific literature on livable communities, and housing is just one of them. And Regional Plan Association, Be My Neighbor, also, they've been talking about these same things, as has many other, realizing that we really need to get the, you know, affordable housing for everybody out there for discussion, for construction, and we need to really serve today's families and what they need. So that concludes what I have to say for the moment. And Emmeline, what do we what do we do now? As I can, can I stop sharing my screen? I can stop sharing. Okay.
You can. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Mack over? Yes, Commissioner Bremen.
I just went, uh, question. So that the amended regulation would still require that there be an existing residence on the lot for five years before an A D U is constructed, rather than allowing for the construction of new homes that have an A D U.
The way that is written now, that is correct.
And do you have an opinion on whether we should allow the construction of new ADUs?
Some people are doing that. I mean, some communities are doing that. I don't have names, but I've seen it discussed in the literature. You know, it's funny, with COVID-19 and everything that's happening now, there are so many people who really want that. It's a really interesting point, and maybe some others in the public hearing would have something to say about it. You know, it's nothing I personally would have an objection to. But I think it really depends on what the community wants to see and what the commissioners want to see. You just there's a lot to be said for both pro and probably con. So we left the five years in for now, and you'll see where it goes.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, very good. Ms. Mack over, thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Francis, do you have a question?
I wanted to thank her for a really good presentation. And I I will go with Commissioner Corcoran that I don't like the front door. The pictures you showed were acceptable. But I I don't know, we have to be very careful about that, because you don't want the duplex look. The gray blue one was okay, but I would have preferred the door outside. The other one was very. But it's it's a really good idea and resolve a lot of our housing problems.
Okay.
There's a big, I agree with you, there's a big demand for it.
Oh, there is, definitely.
Thank you for that excellent work, all three committees.
Thank you.
Terrific. All right. So with that, we'll move to public hearing. Sorry, do we have people signed up in the chat box for this?
The only person I have signed up at this moment is Mary Hoag. If anybody else would like to speak, if you could just send me a quick message in the chat, and we'll just have you proceed in the order in which we receive the request to speak. Thanks.
Great, terrific. And Smack over, you can mute now.
Okay, I'm yeah, I will.
Thank you. Ms. Hoag, the the floor is yours.
I'm muted. Wow, I figured it out. Hey, can you hear me? Are you are you here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but now you're breaking up.
Okay, tonight?
You're breaking pretty substantially. No, no, that was broken up. Ms. Harrigan, are you hearing what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Hoag, I apologize, but your your connection seems to be poor, and it's very, very choppy and broken up. We can't understand what you're saying.
So sorry, I sat right by my router so that you could hear me. So I don't know how to get any closer to my router.
Now you're coming through.
Now it's perfect.
I don't I don't know. That is better. I don't know that sitting closer to your router is actually going to make a difference, but.
It can't it can't make it worse. I I'm sitting closer to my router as router as I could, but. That explained that we're in support of this presentation and. Is in support for several reasons. Our perspective, it means it's what the residents want. It's allows residents that are elderly can stay in town because. I'm trying to read and not really read at the same time. But it allows the parent, the elderly that that are not taking in an income to stay in town. It allows the parent, the the child, children of the elderly to take care of their aging parents. It also allows the children that of those those middle. Kids just out of college that haven't launched their careers to come to Fairfield, back to Fairfield, and to stay in Fairfield, and give them a sense of privacy and stay in Fairfield. And it keeps the town vibrant and diverse. But as as Fair Plan, it also means that allow using the existing structure and just using new material, even if they don't realize. Because they're they're creating. And then what I also was hoping to introduce was another was the Fairfield question. It's a group. It's a group that is the high school and just post college group.
Ms., I need to interrupt you. I'm terribly sorry, but much of what you're saying is is not coming through. No, I apologize. I don't know what to do. Do you have written comments? You mentioned that you were reading some things?
I sent a letter.
Yes, we we have the materials from your from your organization. Yes. And that's all part of the file. Well, I mean, you're going in and out, but your video is freezing and such. Maybe turn your video off. I don't I don't need to. We don't we don't need to see the video. If you turn the video off now, just try and speak.
How's that? Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay, I don't need. I'm glad I don't need to be seen.
Great. So so why don't you just go back a little bit to where you wanted to introduce someone to us?
The only other thing I wanted to say was that I was going to introduce a group called the Fairfield Equity Coalition, which is a group of high school, college, and just post-college. They had to go. They were on until seven, just about 7:30. They had hoped to speak a statement. And if you would indulge me, I will read their statement. So I'm taking two to stop spot. And their statement is, as our town has yet to increase our affordable numbers to moratorium level, let alone, this is a high school senior at Ward, he wrote this, just so you know. As our town has yet to increase our affordable numbers to the moratorium level, let alone the 10% level that complies with the 830G statute, having only two, four, seven percent are closing the FEC strongly. 0.8%, according to L A U S, building more affordable housing for struggled families and individuals would would not only help alleviate financial pressures for many Connecticuters, but also allow lower income families the opportunity to start building generational wealth and giving their children the opportunity to study in better school districts. Overall, affordable housing is great for the state, town, and the individuals who may live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I I applaud the the kids for staying on for the hour that they did. And I thank you for listening. And I hope that we can find a time for them to connect with you directly.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Um, any Emmeline, any anyone else?
I didn't receive any other.
This is Donald Peterson. I'm having trouble sending in a chat. I would like to make a comment.
No, no, no worries. Mr. Peterson.
Can we start with, it looks like I saw a couple of hands. So can we start with Don Peterson? Herb goes next. Alyssa goes next, and then Stephen goes fourth?
That works for me.
Okay.
Catherine Giff has been trying to, if you could put me out live.
Okay, yes, you can be fifth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, Donald Peterson from Galloping Hill Road. Also, I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission and realized the need for affordable housing. However, I have a couple of comments is that I happen to be somewhat of a fan of Tiny House Nation on TV. And I'm a little fearful that some of the proposed regulations are essentially subdividing larger lots without going through zoning. And I'm curious, since you're speaking specifically about the Greenfield Hill area, is that wouldn't these additional units require their own septic system and electricity service if if it's not attached? So those are my comments is to consider those issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great questions. Harrigan?
Herb is next.
Yes. Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. I did send a letter. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points and add a couple of points. And speaking on behalf of Fairfield Senior Advocates, we work in a number of different areas, but there's no area that we think is more challenging toward keeping seniors in Fairfield than more senior-friendly housing solutions. than more senior-friendly housing solutions. It's critical for, to keep families together. It's certainly important for everyone's finances. I mean, our estimates are that the cost of losing a senior approaches $10,000 per year in terms of a net loss of a senior household. That's the expected cost. But moreover, we realize the need for a broader, a broader solution, a broader solution in terms of cost-effective living solutions for millennials and, and, and for other members of, of our diverse population. We, we, I knew Carrie, Carrie mentioned all the benefits and I won't go into those. I did want to just say that I, I think that, that when we put this proposal together, the idea was really not to try to push the envelope and suggest every possible bell and whistle and, and, and get as much as we possibly could. We put together something we thought was reasonable and something that you would find acceptable. So I think we're certainly amenable to you broadening this if you see fit. Just following up with a couple of the areas that we just, we just discussed. So we think this is the sound first step toward finding more solutions for our diverse residents and, but probably the first of many. This isn't the only that, that thing that needs to be, to be pushed through with your, with your, with your guidance and support. We think it's a good first step. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Alyssa Israel.
Ms. Israel. Uh, you're on mute.
All right. I'll start again. Thank you. And thanks to the Affordable Housing Committee and Fairplan and Fairfield Senior Advocates for bringing forth these amazing amendments that I've been waiting for, for 15 years. And I see the commission seems to be amenable to them, which I'm very excited about. I did send in testimony earlier and I just want to emphasize certain points and address some comments by the commission members. So I, I definitely think we should get rid of that line in 6.3.3, which says, "The originally existing residence shall have been in existence for a minimum of five years." I've been wanting to get rid of that statement for 15 years. I think new homes should definitely have the ability to be constructed with an accessory apartment. I don't know why they wouldn't or couldn't or shouldn't. I, I'm guessing the concern of maybe a couple of commission members might be that we're creating so-called multifamily housing or duplex by allowing that and that somehow this five-year wait is going to somehow prevent that. I, you know, I basically what, what I see happening is that people build these anyway. They just don't put in a stove. And then, you know, it's roughed out. And then the minute they get their CO, they can go in and, and put in a full kitchen. I mean, currently under our regs, you can go and pretty much build an entire like office space with a kitchenette as long as it doesn't have an oven, right? It, it's not considered a full kitchen and it's not an ADU. But, you know, like, why, why do people have to go around these things to create a kitchen and an accessory dwelling unit is my question. I, I don't think we should punish people for wanting to have these. I think they're great things for all the reasons that the Affordable Housing Committee said. So the, so I, I hope we can nix that one sentence about the five years. The other thing that was brought up by other commission members, which I totally agree with and I put in my testimony, I definitely think we should expand the detached accessory apartments to both AAA and AA zones. I think a one-acre property is a big property. The setbacks are significant. And I, I, I just don't see a problem with having a freestanding accessory dwelling unit on both AAA and AA. And lastly, I, it sounds like there's some good communication going on here. And I hope that will continue with the Affordable Housing Committee, that it won't be just, you know, hopefully it, it'll, you know, the discussions will continue and there'll be friendly camaraderie between the groups and you'll arrive together at a great regulation. And it's not like, you know, it's just a collaboration. That's, that's what I'm saying. So anyway, I'm sorry, I'm talking on and on. I, I wish there was back and forth, but do you want me to, I have just a few more points. Do you want me to pause and let you say something?
I know. So this is public comment. We're, we're generally not asking questions of the public.
I know. I know. I, I, I know how it works, unfortunately. I just, I wish there was more give and take. So I'll, I'll, I just want to finish up. Let's see, Mr. Peterson seemed to have some concerns about septic. I don't see that as being a problem. Having grown up in, in, in the Greenfield Hill area, where all my friends in the seventies had large families, I don't, don't think, I don't see septic as being a problem. And I also did a little bit of, of my own research. I've been a Realtor for three years and I have access to pretty powerful data on the MLS system. And I did a small sample study. I did it, I've done it before. I did it this morning. I don't know if it's good to share the data, but I, I think it might answer some of Ms. Ms. Braun's questions about, you know, homes that, that have an accessory dwelling unit that may not be permitted. But anyway, it's a small sample size. I had just three, 13, excuse me, a total of 13 accessory dwelling units. Do you want me to continue or do, should I end? Would the data be helpful to you? So I, I think it'd be helpful for you to know that these 13 units in Greenfield Hill, I narrowed it down to Greenfield Hill. They were 600 square feet to 941 square feet. They were all one bedrooms, all of them. And they rented, this was in the last five years, they rented for between $1,450 to $2,300. On the $2,300 one was the 941 square foot cottage. This was a detached cottage. I'm assuming it was grandfathered because the home was built before 1925. So 30%, we're only talking about 13 different units, 30% of them, in other words, four of them were detached units. Okay, already. So there's already a bunch of detached units. Only, I, I did compare the MLS to the tax record. I just went to Vision Appraisal. And out of those 13 accessory apartments, five of them were designated single-family within-law on the Tax Assessor's database. The other 62% had a different designation. So, but anyway, I, I, I hope that information was useful to you to know that, you know, these are one-bedroom places. You're, you're only going to fit one or two people in them. It's not going to create overcrowding or any issues like that. We're not creating multifamily housing. We're, what we're doing is creating flexible housing and, and making it as, as was said before, making it easier to age in place or have children, adult children or rent out your, part of your dwelling for income. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next up, we have Stephen Grothwell.
Mr. Grothwell. Lord is yours. You are on mute, sir. Ms. Harrigan, do you, yeah, there we go.
There we go. Thank you. Steve Grothwell, I'm the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. And I just wanted to add a couple of quick comments. One, on behalf of the committee, first I want to thank Carrie for all of the work that she did with Herb and the others, number one. I want the commission to know that the Affordable Housing Committee unanimously and enthusiastically supported these proposed amendments. And that we are discussing ways how we could incentivize the whole process through maybe the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There may also be ways that the Assessor's Office or the Building Department or even the Zoning Commission, things that they could do to incentivize, especially as it applies to the affordable units. And then on a personal level, I wish that these regs were in effect a few years ago when I'm a senior member of town. And when I was trying to decide what to do with my four-bedroom house up in Greenfield Hill, this would have given me a whole nother opportunity to think about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next, we have Catherine Giff.
Hello. Thanks very much, Catherine Giff. And thanks again, Carrie and Herb and everybody who did, I think, a superb job. It's nice to see such support coming from the commissioners as well. So I have a kind of prepared statement, trying to keep it to two and a half minutes here. ADUs have been discussed in this town for 40 years. We have documents going back that far, thinking it was a pretty good thing. And a lot has changed over 40 years and the pace of change is speeding up. And yet we're still just discussing rather minor revisions to regulations that significantly regulate how a resident homeowner can modernize their home. I know there's a lot of debate about the different uses of ADUs, but at the, at the heart of an ADU is a resident homeowner trying to modernize their home. ADUs have the potentials to address the very strong desires of Fairfield residents, homeowners and taxpayers to remain in our community, create financially sustainable housing and incorporate features that support safely aging in place. It also develops potentially capital A affordable housing that would be in scale with the neighborhood and using a ready existing infrastructure. Lastly, it can generate a dependable, consistent and diverse tax base of resident property owners rather than a small number of non-local developers owning upwards of 10% of our town's housing units. I request respectfully the leadership of the town planning and zoning to make the ADU a viable option for housing diversity in Fairfield. Four things. One, expand the maximum square footage allowed. 40% is an accessory use of space. Keep it at that. If you have to keep it 1,000 square feet, please allow for provisions that universal design features are going to add to square footage. Two, allow the creation of an ADU in a house that is less than five years old. Three, remove the town's requirement to approve, register, annually permit, in perpetuity every accessory apartment constructed. And four, I would establish, I would love to see a position established that could educate, promote and facilitate the creation of ADUs. Rather than copying the Connecticut Affordable Housing Regulations into our local zoning regulations, please give authority to the Affordable Housing Committee, a uniquely qualified and advantageous starting point to advance its mission, which is much more than 830 mandated construction. Sorry, it sounded a little stilted, but I am very passionate about it and I appreciate everybody's interest and support. Go forward with the changes and go boldly beyond those changes. Thanks very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Giff. Anyone else on the list, Ms. Harrigan?
I don't have anybody on the list. I'm just scanning to see whether anybody's waving to have the opportunity to speak.
I'm not seeing any hands.
My, me neither.
Okay. Very good. So Ms. McOver, you have an opportunity for rebuttal if you have anything you'd like to add or say in response to public comments?
I think, well, can you hear me? Because I took off my gum.
Yeah, we can hear you just.
I think everybody made some really good comments and, you know, we did start out kind of holding back a little, not quite sure where we're going, but we heard certainly many people calling for further development of this and going further than I had put in these regs as I submitted them to you, as we submitted them to you. So I, I hope you will consider what you heard and what was submitted and come up with the best thing for the town, realizing that we are really in a very different place than we were a year ago. And even further than that, that the speed of change has changed tremendously and people's needs have changed tremendously and we need to be flexible. And that's really all I have to say. I don't know. The one person said, are we going to be, no, you can't subdivide a lot, a AAA lot. They're not a subdivision up there and I, that's just understood. And we can spell it out further. So that the accessory unit has to stay with its main house. It's not a subdivisible lot.
Right. Very good. Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Really appreciate the, the application and all the public comment. So with that, I will close the public hearing on this item. We can move on now to our second and final public hearing tonight, which is item number four, 1391 Black Rock Turnpike, resubdivision application of Lucas Papa George for two lots in a B zone as shown on plans entitled Resubdivision Map Prepared for Lucas Papa George, dated August 10, 2020, prepared by Thaddeus Kolskowski Land Surveyor. Mr. Went, who do we have on today for this application?
Mr. Papa George is there? He's been here. I don't see him. I saw him previously though.
I see his name. I don't see a video. I see his name. Mr. Papa George?
Yes.
Excellent. So we've just called your item and your opportunity now to present your application.
Okay, I want to first thank the board for being here. I know this is a long night. There's been a lot of meetings lately for the 8:30 exchange. They've been going a long time as I've seen. So I'm glad you spent the time with me tonight. I am on this meeting tonight for my proposed subdivision of 1391 Black Rock Turnpike into two separate single-family lots on Borowski Street. We applied and were approved. A variance needed, needed to create these lots. This was approved due to overwhelming neighborhood support. Being that the lot was created after March 8, 1948, we need TPZ Board approval. Here. Is it my opinion that I meet all subdivision regulations? All town departments have reviewed and, and approved our application. I request the commission to approve this as set forth in Section 122 of the subdivision regulations. Be short and sweet so we can get out of here. I do request that, and, and I, I do have a, a letter I submitted on the 22nd to, to the zoning department. I request that on Borowski Road, we do not put concrete sidewalks and aprons in. And if you don't have the letter attached, I could read it off to you, but if not, I could, I could do it at that.
So it's not in the, in the packet of materials that's linked in the application?
It was, if I may for a second, Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Went for the record. It came, there was a supplemental package. I, I resent the agenda a second time that had the revision to the site plan and the request for a waiver of the sidewalks as a separate email.
Uh, wait a second. Yeah, I see it now. Okay. A couple of follows. Okay, a couple of follows.
I could summarize it.
Yeah, can you please, so also, can you speak to the the variants that you obtained? That's not, there's no, we don't have a copy unless I missed that one, too. We don't have a copy of any variants in in the file, the application that we received with the packet.
Subdivision map allows us, I can pull the variant out, but basically we we ask for a reduction of lot size and a reduction of square on one of the lots. Other than that, we meet all zoning and setback regulations.
I see. And what was the basis for the for the variants to reduce the covered area?
Um, you, basically, that it has been approved in many different cases for the for the size of lot as as we've applied for in a B zone. Two-family lot, it is an approved two-family lot per the current zoning regulations. And I believe we had, I don't call me on this, but I believe we had at least fifteen opportunity or zoning approvals of variants like that. So basically, to convert the, convert the lots into, into two-family into two lots is basically what we're doing here.
Okay, and and so the driveway cuts are both going to be on Borowski Drive?
Driveway cuts will both be on Borowski Drive. We're going to remove the cut on Black Rock Turnpike. Existing sidewalk, we're going to patch that on Black Rock Turnpike. It has ADA, meets all the ADA requirements, and we will meet that with our patch. Removing a large parking lot, this is one of the buildings that's used pretty much as a commercial building at one point. We're going to leave, our plan right now is to leave the existing structure, remodel, put an addition on it, and then build a new structure in the back or behind it, closer, further down Borowski Road.
Right. Do we have, do you have calculations for sightlines for the driveways?
Sightlines for the driveways? What we have from the corner? From the corner all the way down Borowski, there's no calculations. Borowski's a dead straight street, so. And then Engineering Department approved the location of our driveway as far as distance from the intersection. We actually revised it to meet Laura's request.
All right, I, so I don't I don't see that in in file either. Mr. Wen, do we, we normally require sight sightlines for the driveway cuts and subdivision, do we not? I think you're on mute.
Sorry about that. We do have the report from the Engineering Department that I thought I made part of your packet. Didn't, I certainly will. We don't have a sightline calculation. I don't I don't believe in this file, but and I and I will confirm that with Engineering, but I think the, since it's an individual residential driveway on a cul-de-sac street, I don't think it worked, and I'll let them speak to it. But it doesn't rise to the to the intersection sight distance standard as a more active driveway might. But I will confirm that with the Engineering Department and provide you with the report that we have in the file.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Papa George, can you can you please explain to us why, the basis for your request to waive the sidewalks? And, you know, important improvements?
The basic request for the sidewalk is if you go into the subdivision regulations, they specifically say in in residents A, B, and C in all design business districts and industrial districts and pedestrian easements, they they are required on new streets. This is not a new street. The regulation goes on to further say in the other districts, the commission may require the installation of sidewalks in place deemed desirable by the commission. This is not another district. This is an A, B, or C district. And it is not a new street. So we're going off of the of the subdivision regulation guidelines and the wording of that. I also go on to say it's, um, there are locations, this is a, this is a cul-de-sac street, Borowski Drive, with no sidewalks, it has no concrete aprons. And in in other instances, and in a handful of other instances, this was not required by this committee or this prior committee members. It also, also, if this, you know, we missed the regulations by a couple of years. So to be, this make would be a free cut, basically, which we wouldn't require even a hearing or anything. And lastly, the town is actively removing sidewalks nowhere. And in my proposal, I showed pictures of the sidewalks being removed on on the corner of Nutmeg and and Pemburn Road. I requested a list of the other sidewalks being removed on dead-end streets. And they they've assured me that they've done it numerous times, but they did not have a list for me. So that's the basis of my request.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Papa George? Mr. Bravman?
Mr. Papa George, Laura Pooley mentioned a complete streets policy of the town, which would require the addition of sidewalks for pedestrian access in a project such as this. And, you know, the the property is obviously along Black Rock Turnpike, which has, you know, that that side of Black Rock Turnpike has sidewalk that is used by pedestrians. I just wanted to know if you could comment on the complete streets policy or, you know, the the general policy that we are trying to encourage different modes of transportation in addition to automobile, such as pedestrian, bicycle, wherever possible, according to that that policy that was enacted some years ago.
My response, I requested any information from Laura as I could, and she's she instructed that the sidewalk policy was a zoning requirement only and not the Engineering Department. They require the, that we specify how they would be built and what they're built out of according to the, according to their design. But she said she has nothing to do with the requirements of that. I mean, maybe there is a policy on on record, but I'm not aware of that. And then speaking, the neighbors on Borowski Road were against sidewalk and concrete aprons. They feel like more of an urban feel. We are absolutely in agreement that, you know, Black Rock Turnpike needs sidewalks, and they need well, well-built and ADA-compliant sidewalks. We have no problem with that. We just don't see a purpose of putting a sidewalk, you know, a hundred feet down the road to a dead-end street that the neighbors don't want, while the town is actively removing sidewalks to nowhere that are currently installed.
Was there neighbor support, was there neighbor support on the record in the the variance application before the ZPA?
We had numerous neighbors that signed off on application, specifically on the sidewalks, but in the application, yes.
Sure, sure. I just talking about, you know, neighbors who may have commented at the hearing or may have submitted a letter in support.
We had neighbors that signed off in support on the affidavit page, but no one testified and nobody, nobody wrote a letter against or for, the sign-offs for.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Francis?
Mr. Papa George, what is at the end of Borowski Drive that prevents it from going through the high street? Open space or what?
Good question. I believe there's a, I actually think it's, does it dead end to the Judas State? I'm not sure.
Oh.
I could be wrong. I'm positive.
Because I I could see requiring sidewalks if someday Borowski is going to be put through, because sometimes that happens with dead ends. Thanks.
It is possible, but I believe there's wetlands behind, yeah. Again, I'm not positive. I didn't study the map at that end of the street.
Right. I mean, Youngstown Road, it looks like, I'm just looking at a map now, Youngstown Road connects up with Borowski?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, this is not a cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac is not a dead end.
It's, yeah, it's not a dead end. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a dead end after Youngstown. But it's not a cul-de-sac. Yeah, anyway, any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Papa George? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Papa George, members of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Okay, I see a hand. Ms. Dravis? Yes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for taking my comment. I am actually a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, and I thought I'd sit in because the current variance is up the street from me. I live down the road. I thank you for pointing out that Youngstown does intersect Borowski. Youngstown has new sidewalks. I know this because we walk and ride bikes in the neighborhood. So to the commissioner's point, Mr. Branagh, it, it is important to have pedestrian and alternative routes for pedestrian and bikes. There are a lot of people who like, especially now, want to get out and walk around. Sidewalks are on Black Rock Turnpike. They were installed by, in front, on that side of the road by actually community development block grants. So it's a nice continuous sidewalk now. I understand the proposal, he's saying he's going to create a sidewalk in the, over the existing driveway that would be, you know, certainly acceptable and important to to keep in place. The subdivision itself, it's a very large lot. I've walked past it a million times. My dentist is on the other side of that house. And I'm not in favor of subdivisions. But as long as the existing house remains in in the same footprint, I think there's enough space in front to allow for a house in back. So that being said, the sidewalk requirement for a subdivision, that's really up to the zoning, whether they, you know, enforce that. But it would be nice if a sidewalk could continue down from the corner for people who walk up and down Black Rock Turnpike, you know, as an option. So thank you very much for hearing my comment.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. But just and just just to be clear, one of the things you mentioned is that the existing house doesn't have to stay in the existing footprint. You know, once it's subdivided, they can develop both parcels, you know, in accordance with regulations.
Okay, I guess I heard him say he was going to keep it in the original footprint.
That may be the case, but I don't I don't believe we can require that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome. Any other members of the public? Looking for hands, because I don't think anybody signed into the chat.
Hello?
Yes, hello?
Matthew, my name's Tim Staples. I actually live, I live right next door. I'm at thirty Borowski, right there on the corner. So I I just wanted to join. I I could only hear bits and pieces of the meeting, but I did want to just join. And it's, you know, I was planning on giving you guys a call tomorrow as well, though. But I think for the purpose of, you know, just the the size of the road now, and we have, we have young kids as well. But I I do think a sidewalk kind of, you know, I didn't hear enough to understand where the sidewalk would be in place. But I think if it involves, you know, digging up the front of our yard and things like that, and I think neighbors around as well, I mean, you'd have to ask them too, but I I think we would vote in favor of not putting sidewalks on the road. I think as it is right now is, you know, there's other access points to our road. We talked about Youngstown Road as well. So I just wanted to give my two cents. I honestly came in kind of late to this, so I didn't, I didn't have enough time to listen to too much of it. But again, we live right next door, and we would, you know, my wife and I discussed it. We actually wouldn't want a sidewalk on that, on the road.
Okay, very good. Thank you. To be clear, the proposal is not to put sidewalks in front of your house. They would be required in front of this parcel. And as development unfolded, the hope of the, the the policy would be that sidewalk would be connected up as as development occurs.
Okay, so it would just come down and then around the corner, it wouldn't go all the way down the road.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thanks, man.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Anybody else? I don't see any hands. If you're not on video and you want to speak, please make yourself known. Once I close the public comment period, I'm going to go back to the applicant for rebuttal and then close the public hearing on this item. So now is your opportunity to speak if you'd like to be heard. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Papa George, you're welcome to rebuttal if you'd like it.
I will, thank you. A rebuttal on the existing house, our intention right now to keep the existing house. But according to current zoning regulations, we do need to make the house larger because it would be too small. We have to take a small portion of the addition down off the side of the house or the what's currently the back of the house to make the two lots, to make the setbacks. And that would give us, it was less than, I believe, a thousand square feet requirement. So we would need to bake, put in a small, we would need to put an addition on in order to make it meet zoning requirements. And in that intent, we plan on making it a little more usable. Being with the Low Income Housing Act, I developed in Fairfield slightly, but but I always try and keep our houses priced below the market. I've never subdivided a piece of property before. This is in in adjacent to doing a two-family house. We'd be doing two individual houses. We're not going for apartment building or anything like that that's going on at the other end of Black Rock Turnpike. We're, we're trying to work within the existing zoning regulations and the existing variants that we that we received. And sidewalks, although they are nice and needed in some sections, we don't feel that they're necessary at Borowski. They're, again, currently being removed in other parts of town by by the town with our tax dollars, the cost to us to remove and seed what's just an unnecessary sidewalk. The one, the one example I gave is, is a sidewalk going into an open space. The sidewalk we would put in would would cause the price of the house to go up, while we're trying to keep the cost down on these two houses. And it also don't, you know, basically stop people at at the property to either walk across grass or or step out into the street. It says, again, I would just want to reiterate, it doesn't seem that that this board has the right to require sidewalks on a residential A, B, or C zone that doesn't create a new street as is currently written. And that might be a typo or a mistake, but that's how it's written. So I'll leave the board to review, and if you have any other questions, I'm always available. So I'll, I'll leave the board to review, and if you have any other questions, I'm always available.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any final questions?
I just.
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Berman, then Commissioner Brown.
I guess my, my question was whether we could get a copy of that variance and any record on the, on the variance for our review. And the other question would be, I guess, to Mr. Wen, whether we could get background on the interpretation of that requirement of our subdivision regulations over time in terms of the argument that the applicant's raised that, you know, we don't have the authority to require sidewalks unless a new street being created.
Okay, I, I can answer. The, the, the answer to your first question is absolutely we can. There is a reference. It's on the, on the subdivision plan, there's a, there's a reference to it. It was for Lot Arian Square, but we can certainly provide you the, the hard copy of that. The regulation says what it says. It's, it has been the longstanding interpretation of that with this commission that subdivisions on existing streets are subject to that requirement at your discretion. There have been cases where, many cases where some sidewalks have been required in similar subdivisions, and, and of course, there have been other examples of where the commission over, over time has chosen to waive that requirement, so it's, it's, it's been, it's been applied in the past, and it's always been the commission's position. It's, it's discretionary in your part.
Okay, Commissioner Brown? You're on mute.
Hi, Mr. Papa George. So your plan is to eliminate that sort of pavement parking area and make that into lawn, I guess, behind the existing house, and then put the new house kind of a little behind, but next to your house, both exiting on Borowski with driveways? I'm looking at your plan. That's what it seems to be. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Mr. Papa George?
Yes, I'm here, don't worry. That, that is our plan.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Very good. Other commissioners? Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Papa George, thanks very much for your application and your time. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing on this item, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone. Good night.